Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at Goodyearaz.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on March 4th, 2019. Please join Councilmember Pizzillo in the pledge allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Almighty Father, I ask that you provide wisdom and clarity for us as we go about doing the business of the city. I ask that you keep safe all of our men and women in uniform working both here and abroad, and provide safe passage home for all attending this meeting tonight. In your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Pizzillo. We're going to go to the communication. We have three communication items tonight. So we'll start out with the first one, and 4.1 is Westmark President and CEO Sandra Hoffman will provide an organizational update. Sandra, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening to present just a brief update on West Valley Pipeline. It's our workforce development strategy for the West Valley. Maybe?
Can someone assist her if she's having problems? I appreciate it. Thank you.
So several years ago, probably about four or five years ago, the West Valley mayors took a look at I-10 in the morning and asked MAG if they can help with identifying what the issue is with all these cars driving east. Who are these people, and where are they going, and where are they going to work that it's so important to get on I-10 in that hot mess every morning? So MAG took a deep look at a lot of the data that they collect. They're a transportation organization that collects a lot of data on key industry occupations in this region. We then, they gave the information to a group at Westmark, which then also combined a partnership with ASU and MZ, which is a workforce database, and took a much deeper dive into this information. Let me step back a little bit to the MAG data that they were able to give to us. Several years ago, they told us that our population today is 1.6 million. And when we went out and started messaging these numbers, it was pretty significant and shocking to folks. Some other areas that were really surprising is that the city of Phoenix, the largest West Valley city, actually has 40% of their population living west of I-17. The West Valley's workforce age is actually 62% of the population, which means our population's getting a whole lot younger than people thought we were. And our average household income is on the rise. It hovers around $65,000 right now, but if you look into key areas in the West Valley, in areas of Goodyear, in Buckeye, in Arrowhead, in Vistancia, in Peoria, in Litchfield Park, you'll see income levels closer to $100,000. So pretty significant. This slide is not for you to actually read those numbers, because I can't even read those numbers myself. It really is more illustrative. If you look at the bars on the left, my left, you'll see the West Valley workforce related to the West Valley resident population, and you'll see that we have more residents than we do jobs. The Central Valley is fairly the opposite. They're an importer of jobs, and the East Valley is pretty equal. So the purpose of this slide is to say that in the West Valley, we have tremendous opportunity. One of the key indicators that businesses look for when deciding where they're going to locate is available workforce. So that's why that was important to us. We took the MAG data next, combined it with, which was very quantitative data, as well as the ASU and MZ data, and then we combined it with a qualitative step, taking that knowledge and then turning it into a workforce development plan. We hired Chabin Concepts with a combination of contributions from the business community, the utilities, Maricopa Community College District, and many of the West Valley cities, and we hired Chabin Concepts. They came on board, they validated the data that MAG and ASU and MZ had pulled together. They did a full-blown SWOT analysis with over 100 participants, including Mayor Lord. They did a gap analysis to determine where do we have our strengths in education programs and our business needs, and where are those gaps, and then developed out of that West Valley pipeline. They looked at key industries in the West Valley. So these six key industries, advanced business services, manufacturing, aerospace, health services, IT, and transportation logistics are our key areas of focus. This is just a little bit deeper into the gap analysis. What we discovered in the gap analysis is actually we were stronger in certain areas than we thought we were going into it. Again, looking at that high-level information that MAG gave us, we thought we were strong in three key areas: healthcare, finance and insurance, and manufacturing. Through this additional deeper dive, we found out that we have a very strong aerospace and aviation population, and equally the same in IT. And it makes sense, because we're right next to Luke Air Force Base. We have a lot of talent that comes out of that base that are in the IT area. And then the same for information technology. A lot of those companies that work in IT are smaller companies, and they're not captured through big data, which is initially what we were looking at. I'm just going to click through these slides just briefly. What I wanted to show you here is each industry sector that we looked at. We looked at not only the top five key occupations in those, but we drilled further into it to the top 25 of those occupations. So let's take advanced business services, for example. A company is looking at, in finance and insurance, they want to know how many tellers you have, how many frontline supervisors you have, how many loan officers you have. This is really the drill-down information that's more important to them. This slide shows that, and actually, in advanced manufacturing, we've got some work to do in electrical and electronic equipment assemblers, which is, again, strengthens the partnership and the reason that we work so well with West Mac. Again, I won't go through all of these. So out of this West Valley pipeline, we have nine strategies that we have to implement over the next five years. Three of them revolve around messaging and marketing. We have to be on the same page as we tell our West Valley story. The other five of them are really key to education. So we formed two groups over the summer. I'm just going to pop back to the slide for a second. So you see, we did the data, we did the consultant work, we did the stakeholder outreach, we have West Valley Pipeline, and now we're in the action mode. The West Valley Pipeline was adopted by the Westmark Board of Directors in April of 2018, and immediately we began implementation. We formed a marketing subcommittee over the summer and an education partners group also over the summer. For the past six months, both of these groups have dived into a whole bunch of work. We still have business outreach and industry-focused groups to get done later on. But I want to hit on two areas of key accomplishments. In education, Estrella Community College President Ernie Lara met with me over the summer and said, "I want to take this information that you have, 273-page document, I want to drill into it, and I want to find out where we have the needs in the Southwest Valley and what programs do I need to develop." Out of that, he was able to lobby successfully and secure $31 million for a new facility at Estrella College. This facility is going to allow him and allow the college to expand their nursing labs and makerspace, which at the end of the day is a reduction in the wait time for the nursing program. That's a huge accomplishment. Glendale Community College has taken somewhat of a similar approach. They have gone back to the six key industry areas, and they're aligning their programs with each of those areas so that they can identify where in fact they have gaps and where do they need to increase programs, or where do they need to rely on their sister community colleges to fill in. In the area of marketing, we have two key areas that I think we're pretty proud of. In six months, the marketing subcommittee was formed, and we're pleased that Tammy Bo has recently joined that subcommittee. We have two deliverables out of that. One is a market research report, and that was done in partnership with CBRE. Tomorrow morning, we're launching that report. It is a very deep dive. It's a very detailed report that will be used by commercial real estate brokers, because after all, they're the ones that are selling our communities. We want to make sure they have accurate and in-depth information. Secondly, is we have a calendar of messages, key messages that we will be delivering each month. We secured a grant from the Tahoma Autumn Nation to the tune of $50,000, and with part of that money, we were able to hire a writer. She has come on board, and she has started writing articles. She hit the first article, really comprehensive article with the city of Goodyear, and she's going to continue that theme throughout the year. And accompanying that, those articles will go out to the print media, social media, and so on, but accompanying that, Christina Vassler in my office is creating videos associated with each of these messages. So I hope I can do this, Jessica. I have a really brief video to show you. So February was focused on healthcare, and that's why you see that healthcare message. And I've just completely lost all of my slides. So on that note, oh, here we are. Thank you. What I'd like to do is kind of just show you visually how this all fits into the big picture of Westmark. There you see at the very top box is the Westmark Board of Directors, inclusive of the Westmark Executive Committee, which Mayor Lord sits on. The steering committee is one that has been working diligently for the past three years, almost weekly meetings on this workforce strategy, the marketing subcommittee that just started this summer, and then finally, down the road, we have the industry advisory councils that we'll be working with. I want to leave you on the note that, with stats, because I love my numbers, Maricopa County is the fourth-largest county in the United States. And over the next 25 years, 49.5% of that growth will occur in the West Valley. And actually, that's a stat that Julie Arundel mentioned a couple weeks ago at a presentation and really made my heart smile. So thank you, Julie. With that, I just want to leave you with, these are the partners that have invested financially and with their hard work into West Valley Pipeline, and I know that this is a communications item, so I will drop you all an email individually if you have any questions for me at a later date. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Council, do you have any comments that you'd like to make to Westmark before we go on? Pretty clear and good information was given to you. Thank you very much, Sandra. All right, we're going on to the next 4.2. This is always, always very nice to have presented before us. We greatly appreciate it. We'd like to recognize Sergeant Mike Henderson for his years of service, and Sergeant Henderson will be retiring on March 7th. And of course, Police Chief Jerry Geier will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you tonight for the opportunity to honor Sergeant Mike Henderson, who has honorably served the city of Goodyear and the Goodyear Police Department for 29 and a half years. So Mike is joined by his family tonight. They're in the back, his wife Martha, son Walker, and son Chase, and his sister Susan. And also, what Mike doesn't know, we've compiled some of his best photos from the past 30 years, and we will watch them. So we'll watch them as we talk. So Sergeant Mike Henderson started with the Goodyear Police Department in October of 1989 under then-police chief Seymour Neelus. During his tenure, Mike has served as an officer, sergeant, and acting lieutenant. He has worked in several units at the PD to include patrol, traffic unit, criminal investigations, and for the past several months has been assigned to the training unit and has assisted in getting the entire department through our required annual training. Mike, not many of us can say that we made it through 29 years in policing. It's quite an accomplishment. I know this is not goodbye, as we have already talked about some potential volunteer opportunities, so I know that we're going to see you. But I just want to say thank you for your leadership through a period of change where we have shaped the culture and the vision of the Goodyear Police Department. I also want to thank you for your bravery, compassion, and dedication to the city of Goodyear and to our residents. And most of all, enjoy your retirement. Would you like to say anything?
Sergeant, this is your time before us. Yes, you can take a picture, but why don't we do the comments before, because this is always a special occasion, somebody worries. So I'm going to start with Councilman Stip.
I had the privilege of working with Mike on the street in addition to being here, and someone tonight described it as the end of an era, and that's very, very true. And I think that was the best way to describe it, is 30 years on the police department, the ups and downs, the ins and outs, the growth. Mike has seen it all, and every single time I ever ran into Mike, whether it was as after I retired or even on the street, Mike was always a professional, and it was a pleasure to work with you, and I wish you the very, very best in your retirement.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Laura Tonno.
I want to thank you and your family for all the service, because I know you probably had a lot of late nights away from your family, and you gave it to our city, and you gave it to our citizens. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and have a wonderful, blessed retirement, and go have some fun.
Councilwoman Caneau.
Well, I'm sorry that I'm new and just getting on as you are leaving, but public service is good service, and police work is good and honorable work, and there's a principle about finishing well, so well done.
Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Mayor?
Well, we'll miss you, but I hope we see you soon, and we want to thank you for all that you've done. It's always been such a joy to have you with us for the shop with the cop and every other thing we've been involved in. You've been right there with us every day. And Goodyear is so much better because of your service to us, and we appreciate you and your family. Thank you so very much.
And you are a part of our culture, and you've seen that increase through the years. And you've seen absolutely the buy-in from our citizens and the volunteers and all of that. And now I think we're going to have you on the volunteer side and somewhat, and what a value you're going to be to the people. So with that, may we take a picture with you? All right, Council, let's go down. All right, the next is 4.3, and Council would like to recognize Nora Castillo for her years of service. Mrs. Castillo officially retired on February 22nd, but we now have the opportunity to thank her for all of her work while working at Goodyear. She's a familiar face, and we've missed that familiar face, so.
I hope I get this right. They told me to click.
Can somebody help? There we go.
Oh, okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, esteemed members of Council. It is my pleasure, genuine pleasure, to recognize Nora Castillo on her retirement from the Goodyear Municipal Court. Nora's career has been longstanding with the city of Goodyear. She actually began back in 1978 as a part-time telecommunications operator. She became then an official employee of the city in 1995 and continued to serve as a 911 operator until 2006, in which she moved into her role as court clerk and ended her career on the 22nd of February of this year in course as a court specialist. Although she officially has served an official 24 years of service, today we'd like to present Nora with her plaque in our admiration of her and appreciation of her committed service, but it's been actually 41 years since 1978. So I cannot attest to working with Ms. Castillo. I did not have the pleasure of doing that, as I had new on board, but I can attest to the very important work that she, as well as her court family, who's right behind her, does every single day. We impact everyone's lives. We're the only justice center for the city of Goodyear, and we do it proudly. And sometimes it's a thankless job, but I know that Ms. Castillo has put her heart, her soul, her long hours, her sweat, and her tears here. And I'd like to thank her very much for her dedication and her service, and I know that Ms. Whalen, along with all of her other court family members here, are very proud to recognize her many years of service. And if any of them would like to come up and say something on behalf of Ms. Castillo, if you'd be gracious enough to allow that.
Yes, Judge Margalino, it's so nice to have you here and presenting that, and you're absolutely correct about her. And so this is a special time for us also to say thank you to you, unless you're from you have some others that would like to come up? That's fine.
Is there anyone that would like to say something from her court family? No pressure. There we go.
There we are.
I guess I feel an obligation. I actually have known Nora since I was probably five years old, when she was a dispatcher. My mom was a dispatcher with her, so she has really watched me grow up. And, you know, I just want to thank you. You really are a part of our family. You know when we need chocolates and hot Cheetos and chorizo burritos on my birthday. She never forgets. And your famous bean dip and, you know, all the memories that staff have, which I think is why they're all here tonight, because we love you and we are going to miss you, and we're slightly jealous that you're not taking us with you. So thank you from the bottom of all of our hearts, and I know everybody's going to expect some hugs and pictures with you after, so I won't keep you up too long. But thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to give the extra thanks to Nora. We really have treasured working with her.
We're going to give her a round of applause, but I know, Council... Nora, I'm sure you have a few words to say to us. You've been such a caring person, so I think we're just kind of expecting that.
Well, one thing about Crystal, when she was a little girl, five years old, or probably younger, back in the day, when we were dispatching on graveyard, and Mom had to work graveyards, and back in that day, we just started with two dispatchers, and Mom didn't find or didn't have anyone to take care of them at night, you know, at night so they could sleep, so she would sleep underneath dispatch table.
Oh.
Right, Crystal? See? Yeah. And then if it got maybe a little busy, she would have to go to the courtroom, which was just down the hallway.
That's a wonderful story to tell.
Good memories.
Council, would you like to make any comments before we take a picture with her? Some of you have been here for a while. Councilman Pizzillo, you've been here, you know her.
I just appreciate all the hard work you've done over the years, and you've had a great team behind you all those years as well, and a real strong family, and that's what Goodyear's known for, a strong family. So again, I hope you really truly enjoy your retirement. Don't do like mine, I'm busier now than when I supposedly retired 10 years ago. Do it right. Retire, retire, okay? Have a great retirement.
If you don't mind, one more duty, we'd like a picture with you, so we'll all come down.
on any non-agenda item. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Then let's go on to the consent agenda.
It's approval of the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.4 by Tyler Olin, please?
6.1, approve the replat of Lot 9 of Estrella Falls Regional Shopping Center. 6.2, approve a budget transfer for the brine management study. 6.3, accept easements and deed for the corrugate access road. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2019-1947, conditionally vacating, abandoning and relinquishing certain rights of way and public utility and sidewalk easements previously dedicated to the city in the plat for Airport Gateway Business Center, providing for an effective date of the abandonment, imposing requirements and conditions for the abandonment to become effective, providing for the expiration of the abandonment approval and providing an effective date of the resolution and also approve the final plat for the project rapid subject to stipulations.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Is anyone in the audience? Oh, a lot of the audience left already, didn't they? My goodness. Would anybody in the audience like to speak and have one removed? Okay, with that, we're going to go on. I need a motion and a second to approve items 6.1 through 6.4 on the consent agenda. Do I hear the motion?
So moved.
All right, I heard it from Councilmember Stiff, the motion, and a second from Vice Mayor Campbell. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we'll go on to the business. I'd like to remind council to wait until the motion is on the table to asking, to be, to asking any questions. So, we'll go with 7.1 and that is to adopt the fiscal year 2020 financial policies. We have a familiar face tonight, Lori Riggaroff, Finance Manager, Budget and Research. Lori?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm here just to talk about the financial policies. If you'll remember, when we talked at the retreat, we suggested that we changed the timing of when you adopt the financial policies. In the past, we've had you adopt them as part of the budget process. What we're doing now is asking you to adopt them before we actually come forward and recommend a budget to you so that we can consider any financial policy changes in developing that budget. There are, as we also talked at the retreat, there's not significant changes to the financial policies based on the conversations we've had with you both at the retreat and a recent work session. So, there's three items reflected here. One we mentioned at the retreat, which was, there was a financial policy that lined out some specific revenue things that we should follow that were related to laws that associate with those revenues. And what we've recommended is we create one of, a new overall goal that says we'll comply with all appropriate rules and regulations rather than trying to lay out some specific ones. So, we've added that new overall goal and then eliminated what was Budget Policy 7 that was specific to certain revenues. The other change is we've never adopted a policy establishing kind of a fund balance goal or standard for the enterprise funds and we're getting ready to move into the next rate planning process. So, what we've done is we've suggested that we approach the enterprise fund similar to the general fund and we establish a contingency or that rainy day fund concept for the enterprise funds at that same 15% of their ongoing revenue. And so, that's a change to Budget Policy 3. And then the last change that we're recommending is in the debt management area, we currently call out the names of specific rating agencies from where we would get rate bond ratings and we're just recommending that we eliminate the name of those specific agencies and just say that we get at least one investment grade rating. So, those are the changes that we're recommending and ask that you would adopt the policies.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, need a motion and a second to adopt the fiscal year 2020 financial policies. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from council member Cano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
I've got a few, so please just bear with me, just comments mostly. On that enterprise fund that you mentioned, the recommended fund balance, are we in compliance now?
Yes, we are.
Okay. The other one deals with the short-term debt payments, should not exceed 5% of the annual revenues or 20% of the total debt. Are we in compliance with that one?
Let me say that part of the annual process is when we come to you with the city manager's recommended budget, we present to you compliance with all these financial policies. So, when we reported to you on the recommended budget for this year, we identified compliance with that policy.
Okay, I'll.
And we will do the same when we present the city manager's recommended budget for 20.
Okay. Just a couple of comments. When it comes to the enterprise fund, I would like to see us at some point, because right now, as far as the enterprise fund is concerned, I personally, this is my own personal opinion, that the enterprise fund is not in compliance with a truly enterprise fund should be because it's being subsidized by those in the north that are paying property tax for one of our water projects. Now, when we did the study earlier, you know, when this former city manager brought the information to us, I felt that that debt service payment, because it wasn't that large, could have been put with a nominal impact on the rates, maybe if 2 or 3 or 4%, I forget what it was, but it was small. So, I'm hoping that over time, we can get back into full compliance, in my view, of what the enterprise fund should be and it covers all of its costs. Because the debt service, to me, since the people in north are paying for the full boat, their water and their infrastructure and everything else, they shouldn't be subsidizing the, what's the city's water company. I know it may be small, but to me, I fought hard and long the first couple of years I was on council, getting all of that off. At that point, it was, I think, up to about $3 million worth and even though this is less than that, I still would love to see that all come off at some point. So, just a thought in future when you put this together. The other one dealt with the property tax rate. You know how I am about lying, you know, zeroing in on a rate. I would hope at some point that we would, and I don't know what the language would be, focus on levy, because as I had mentioned, and I'll mention it again when we go through the budget, our levy, back in '08, I'm not even sure we're there yet of what we're collecting. If so, it's only a little bit above and that's been over 10 years. So, to me, I like to see the focus more on a levy than a rate, because the rate's just a byproduct of a mathematical calculation. That's all it is. And the fact that the rate stays the same and the state allows you to grow your, what is it, appropriation by, or that the, the value by 5% max per year, you keep it the same rate, more than likely the taxes are going up, okay? So, I would like to see us focus on the rate, on what we've done over the last 10 years, the fact that it took so long to get that back and that's not even including new construction on top of that. If you back that out, I'm not sure we are where we were 10 years ago. So, just two comments overall, I like the financial policies because they're very conservative on how we approach things and I think that's what's going to help us if there's ever any downturn. I think we've got enough buffer in here to cover that. But just two things that you've heard me say before that I'm a stickler on, so, and that's my comments.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, we must say you're consistent.
I am when it comes to this.
All right. So, any other discuss, oh, Councilman, yeah, Hampton, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Talk about the last, last one, the debt, the debt management policy, the investment grade rating. You said, we're picking one agency we're going to look at or is it a minimum of one? We're not going to let, show all the different reporting agencies?
Right. Councilmember, we, essentially the, before it said we'd get an investment grade rating from at least one and it named two specific rating agencies. We'll always be rated by at least two rating agencies, so we just changed the policy not to name which two rating agencies from, from which that would, grading would come. So, it gives us the flexibility to change rating companies if we would like to.
Change, either, to go with either, report either one.
Yeah, or there's a third reporting agency that we could also look to, so it's, it's just to simplify it, to remove naming specific rating agencies.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Any other questions? Well, counsel, I appreciate your questions, so I think it's time to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Let's go to 7.2, Stiff, adopt the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Fiscal Year 2020 Pension Funding Policy. Our, our finance director, Doug Sanders, presenting. Welcome, Doug.
Thank you. Mayor and council, we're here tonight to present to you the first fiscal year 2020 pension funding policy for the public safety retirement systems. We had tried to figure out a way to include it as part of our financial policies, but state law asks for a specific policy to be posted, so we're going to try to keep it on an annual basis on the same night that we do our overall financial policies. In 2018, the governor signed House Bill 2097, which adopted a state law requiring that the city adopt a pension funding policy on an annual basis that, that addresses the issues of contribution stability, how and when funding requirements will be met, defining our targeted funding ratio, formally accepting the assets liabilities and thus the unfunded liability of the pension plan, and then posting that policy on our website. The policy that was included in your packets this evening does meet all of those. It is based off of the League of Arizona City's model policy, so we went and followed the model policy. I had also presented this to our public safety pension boards just so that they had a heads-up and an FYI of what we were doing with this to meet the requirements. We do meet every single one of the requirements of the House Bill 2097 and state law. One of the things that it talks about is contribution stability. What our policy does is it requires that we have the annual required contribution that is set by the pension actuarial report, that it would be funded from operating revenues. That is something we currently do in our budget process. We identify those as ongoing revenues. This policy formalizes that. Additionally, one-time funding from the general fund may be reviewed annually. That's something we're putting in the policy, so if we wanted to buy down some of that long-term debt, we would be able to do that. How and when the funding requirements will be met? Due to enhanced investment returns by putting money in early to the public safety retirement, we have a thing in, a policy in there that we will take and make our annual required contribution, we'll prepay that in full 90 days within the beginning of the fiscal year. In addition to that annual required contribution, which is basically the minimum that the actuarial report requires, our practice is to pre-fund 100% of what our budget calls for. That includes all vacant positions, members in drop, any other reason that we would not have to make the contribution, we're making 100% of that contribution so that we can shore up that policy. Additionally, we will be prepaying a portion of the employees' portion of it and getting basically paid back as employees are paid, again, to get that money into the fund, to start collecting that interest and to really shore up that pension system. These, again, are policies that we have been, practices that we have been doing. This policy makes them, formalizes those. With the defining our targeted funding ratio and the timeline for reaching it, our targeted funding ratio is 100%. So, we have an unfunded liability currently and our goal is to get that to 100%. The timeline that the policy states out is a 20-year timeline, so by 2037. So, that is the exact same timeline of the actuarial report. The steps that were taken may make that come in a little bit quicker than that 20 years, but from a policy standpoint, we're going to get it done within the timeline of that actuarial report. When we look at our funding liability that the policy will accept and it's laid out in that policy, the police public safety retirement system has an unfunded liability of approximately $18.7 million for its 143 members. That's a 63.1% funding ratio. Fire is $14.5 million unfunded liability for its 95 members. That's at just under 71% funded ratio. The steps that were taken, the steps that are outlined in that policy are steps that we have been doing in the last couple of years. They're directly in align with the League's Public Safety Pension Task Force and what we have been seeing now is a stabilization of our contribution rates. Where for several years, we saw 5, 10% increases. What we're seeing this year is one of the funds actually is a 1% decrease, the other one is a 1% increase. So, we're seeing stability in the rates and we do tend to see that that will continue. With that, I will open up for any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then I need a motion and a second to adopt the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Fiscal Year 2020 Pension Funding Policy. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Pizzillo and a second by, I mean, Councilman Stiff and did you make a second? And a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion? Councilman Pizzillo? I mean, I'm by your back, Councilman Stiff? That's what happens when you're gone, see?
As the chairman of the pension board, we saw this information earlier in February. Correct. The entire pension board not only endorsed the policies, but also accepted the, the financial reports that came out of the CAFER. Doug, I think just from, for anybody who's listening via Facebook Live or whatever, we are not carrying, this does not affect our debt rating? How does this affect our debt rating, if you will?
Yes, it does not have a direct impact on our debt rating. We characterize this as debt because it is a debt of the city. It is different than our general obligation debt and so on, but it is a debt of the city. The unfunded liability portion is something that we have built into our financial policies, official financial policies now in our ongoing operational budgets, so it does not have any impact on our credit debt ratios.
So, this debt is not preventing us from hiring anybody or, you know, there was an article a year or so ago that talked about the pension debt is keeping cities from hiring public safety personnel. That is not the case in our community?
It is, it has an impact on our ability to hire because what we are seeing with the debt rates that we're paying, were it not for the unfunded liability, our pension would be 15% instead of 11%. So, we are paying towards that unfunded liability about $1 million per year. If there was no unfunded liability, that would be $1 million per year that could be used for operations. That being said, we have built this into our budget, so it's accounted for, so it's hard to answer that question.
It's a technical yes, but an actual no, not really.
Correct.
Okay. I just think it's really important for everybody to understand that we are in a very strong position when it comes to our pension and I, I think when you hear giant numbers like $14 million, you know, about, you know, liability, that those sound very big and they are big numbers. I don't want to dismiss that, but we are in a very strong position financially from the pension system and I think that should be the big takeaway. And now we're just solidifying this with, with some very strong policies, so I appreciate the work that you did and the information.
Thank you.
Councilman Hampton?
I've got a quick question. Is the drop program, are we still, is that still audible for new employees?
New employees, our, new employees are coming into a, a new pension system, a tier three pension system and in that tier three pension system, there is no drop program associated with that. It is a dollar-for-dollar matching contribution program.
Oh, okay. I was just clarifying. Thank you.
Councilman Cano?
Well, I'm thankful for the good financial stewardship on these matters because they're very important to our public safety members. Maybe for the benefit of anybody who's, who's listening or interested, we do hear a lot about unfunded pension liability. It's in the news, pretty prevalent for other cities. And just to clarify, the, the money we put into the system is solely for Goodyear. Nobody else can use it for other pensions.
Correct. It is solely for Goodyear and it is also, one is solely for police, one is solely for fire.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Vice Mayor?
Doug, will we see another policy next year or is this one we're going to be operating on from, from now on?
Every year, we will be bringing this forward and council will be re-adopting it and re-accepting the new liability, so you'll always see the progress of that.
Okay.
And we'll be able to revisit any elements of it.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Yes. Councilman Pizzillo?
Just a general comment, I appreciate the proactiveness on addressing this issue. What did you say the percentage that you're kicking in now, including the unfunded? Did you say 15, 16%?
The percentage contribution- The percentage contributions, for the police retirement, it is 29%.
Okay.
If it were not for the unfunded liability, it would be 15%. So 14% goes to the unfunded liability. On the fire department side, the contribution rate is 28%, and the unfunded was just under 16%.
Okay. The reason why I ask is, it's my understanding there are some cities, probably, I guess, south of us, that really got themselves, and I don't know the mechanics behind it, but some were almost 100%. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. So I appreciate being proactive on the policy, making sure it's built into the budget, so we don't have those kind of issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other? Councilman Hampton?
I think we talked about this before, was the, even though it's not categorized as true debt, if we did pay it down, it could have a positive effect on our credit rating in the future. Was that a true statement?
It wouldn't have an impact on our credit rating, but it is something that we can pay down, just like it is, as if it were a loan. So it is, that is, in our, all of our financial treatments, statements, it is treated as debt, because it is a debt and an obligation we owe to our employees. Paying that down would free up general fund dollars for other purposes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Stiff?
But pay, I think the obvious side, flip that coin over, the obvious side is, the more we pay toward it, the less we have to do today.
Correct.
So the 20-year timeframe in which to pay that back is the allotted timeframe within the pension system itself. So we're not, we're not taking more time than necessary, but we're not doing it in any advanced time, and I think that is an important part of the discussion. We can always pay it faster, but then that's, if we're putting a million toward it now and we decide we're going to put 2 million toward it, that's another million less we're going to have today, to shorten that from 20 to 18 or 17 or whatever. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I think that was an important distinction. Thanks.
Are you, is that understandable? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. We're at 7.3 to approve the Second Amendment to the West Goodyear Sewer and Water Infrastructure Development Agreement and the Second Amendment to the ESCROW Agreement. Rebecca Zuck, our engineer, will be presenting. Rebecca?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I'm here, like the mayor said, to approve the Second Amendment to the West Goodyear Development Agreement and ESCROW Agreement. The initial agreement came before council right about two years ago in March of 2017. The agreement was to build three and a half miles of water and sewer lines to service our West Goodyear area, and the anticipated timeline was 18 months at that time. The construction has been more difficult than anticipated. Some section of the sewer line are about 25-foot deep, and we have a very sandy condition, so we've just run into some issues with that. Again, in September of 2018, I came back to council and requested a six-month extension, extending the overall construction time period for 24 months. I do recall at that time, a council member asking me, are you sure the 24 months is long enough? Don't come back? And I said, yes, I am absolutely sure. Here I am, back again this evening, requesting a four-month extension. But I can tell you that we have been working very diligently with engineering and the public works department with the owner team. We, that has been related both to the water side and the sewer side, and I'm going to go into a little bit of detail on both of those. From the water perspective, the two yellow lines are the two lines that are being constructed as part of this overall project. All of the lines were constructed, with the exception of a small piece here on Yuma. When they went out for the pre-construction meeting for that project, it was realized that there were three CenturyLink lines that were installed in the same right-of-way area that had not been identified, they were not blue-staked. And so it came out as a byproduct of when they went out there to start construction. We then reconvened with their team as well as ours to look at those conflicts, the existing right-of-way that was out in that area. It also is a county section, as well as overhead electrical lines, there's a gas line in that area. So we worked for some period of time, working with their engineering team, trying to identify an appropriate location. We have since done that. They've gone back, redesigned that section of line, submitted it, it's been approved, and that is currently under construction. So that'll be the last piece of the water line to be constructed. For the sewer line, it's a bit different situation. That sewer line had been constructed and has been constructed for some time, and again, it's the yellow line running from here down and then in Lower Buckeye. However, during the construction of that line, there were a number of issues that we became aware of during our inspection. We brought attention to the contractor, that we had some concerns. It was not until we received the video and the as-built information for that line that our concerns, we had the evidence that made it so, we had to call them in and expressed our concerns. So the as-built information essentially is, what is it different than what was constructed? In other words, the line is located seven feet from the center line at a depth of 10 feet. Well, maybe when they get out there, there are encumbrances, and so it's really seven and a half feet to the west of the line, and it's at 10 and a half feet deep. So again, once we saw that, and then at the end of the construction, they run video lines so that we can essentially travel through the lines and observe whether it's differential in the pipe joints. We can look at whether we're going up or down against, because they're running some water throughout that time, so we can check on flows, we can see vertical deflections, so we could actually see where the pipe had shifted. And so there were a number of areas that we had concerns with. We met with them, as well as with the public works and our operation staff, who would actually be taking care of these lines once we took them over. We did have a difference of opinion with their contractor and their engineer. As a result of that, we hired a third party to come in, an engineering firm, that took all of the same information we had, and we all agreed that once this engineering firm came back, we would all agree with whatever they said. And it did come back where there were three areas of concern that did not meet the city requirements and the county requirements. Those three sections of pipe are going to have to be removed and replaced, and again, another, one of those sections is in that 25-foot-deep area. In addition, the third party stated that for, until this area was developed, that the slopes were shallow enough that we would have ongoing maintenance issues. And so as a result, we also worked with our internal team, looked at existing processes that we have for other areas that might be similar, and we worked with the developer and came up with a lump sum in the amount of $200,000 that they would provide to the city for our use over the next five to 10 years, until we got to a point where the, there were enough homes that those peak morning and evening would self-clean the lines, in a sense. And so we anticipated, based on our information, that that would occur between 2022 and 2025, but the amount of money that we have, we looked at if every quarter we did an inspection and then we cleaned and flushed the lines, so we can't, we've identified this amount of money and are very satisfied that we will not exceed that amount in the time period until we come up to the point where we have enough homes that we can have that self-cleaning. So again, with that said, I am here this evening requesting a four-month extension and the addition of $200,000 into the ESCROW account for the West Goodyear Infrastructure Development Agreement and ESCROW Agreement. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you for that presentation. It's very interesting. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then will the city clerk please read Resolution 2019-1944 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1944, approving the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for West Goodyear Sewer and Water Infrastructure and the Second Amendment to the ESCROW Agreement, authorizing the execution of the amendments and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2019-1944? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton, and I heard this was second by Councilman Lortano. Open for council discussion. Yes, vice mayor?
Rebecca, is there water and sewer up north to in the Meadows? Has that already been done up there? Or is this the first area of that West Goodyear that we're developing?
So this is the first area. So on this particular map, the yellow line is what's being constructed, the green line is future.
Okay.
And then the purple line is what we have, and then here is the water. Again, the green line is future stages, the purple is what we have today, yellow being constructed as part of this.
What my concern is, is that if we found some CenturyLink in the right-of-way that we, that was not marked, is there other areas north or south, depending on how you look at this, that we're going to run into the same thing when that's developed? And did your team look into make, I guess, requesting CenturyLink that they go out and mark all of there?
Yes, thank you, vice mayor. That's an excellent question. As part of the plan review process, we actually require that the developer, the engineer, reach out to all dry utility companies and obtain a clearance letter. That information is presented on the cover sheet of the plans. In this case, it was just lines that I would say CenturyLink was not aware were there, and so it was something that came up after we were under construction in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Bazillo?
Is four months enough? I had to ask. Second question, my concern has always been, because we're getting ahead of the development on there, is that will the $200,000 be enough, only because you're going to have to have maintenance when those pipes sit in the ground there, obviously. You want stuff running through them, so you have less maintenance. So, you know, that's always been my concern, when we get jumped too far ahead, is what's the maintenance cost going to be, or something, God for sake, happen like this, we go in and you find the slope is not quite right, or something along those lines.
Absolutely, and thank you for that question. And I wanted to share with you the Pradera right here. They currently are outgrading on-site. They've been working with RID and expect that piece to be finalized, and we can expect there to be a final grading permit issued here within the next couple of months. Paseo Place, which is this piece right here, I don't know why I can't see the other piece, but there's another piece of Paseo Place 1 and 2, it's this one right here. Those have had preliminary plats and are going through the process with construction documents, as well as La Privada, which is this bigger blue piece. That was purchased by Melkor, which is also doing the Paseo Place 1 and 2, and so they're actively moving, so I absolutely appreciate your concern. We took all of that into account. We used relatively low numbers of anticipating within 12 months, 18 months, they would begin their construction, vertical construction, and anticipated, say, five building permits a month, and then looked at that out into the future, and we're coming up with some examples, but we believe that we have been conservative.
Okay.
Councilman Stiff?
I don't intend this to be funny, like, but if we made this six months, would that, I just want to make sure that you've got enough time. So if I, if I, if we were to amend this to six months, is that, I mean, I'm not being, this isn't funny, I mean, this is genuine. Is that, would that be more helpful?
I appreciate the question. This actually came, this four months came to us from the developer. We did ask for them to provide us a schedule, which they did do, showing us exactly how they would roll this out. We have issued the traffic control permits, the water line is underway, we have approved the repairs to the line, we've identified all of the documents that we need, we want the video to occur immediately after the line is placed, so we've tried to take it all into account. I can't say that six months isn't, I wouldn't frown upon that, but the four months is what they feel is appropriate.
And that came from them, not from us?
That came from them. That is correct.
I'd like to offer an amendment to six months' extension, not four.
Madam mayor, members of council, I, probably not a bad idea, but what I would state is, we finalized the agreement, there's multiple property owners, and I think it's already gone out to them.
Okay.
We'd have to go back and repay for the whole deal.
I'm just trying to give a little grace.
So I think we maybe roll the dice on this one.
We've had this a long time. I mean, this is not happening yesterday. It happened quite a long time ago. I think when I started, this, what, were there 13 or 12 of them then? There was much, so it got down to this number. So this, this development has had a difficult time, and part of the reason is that we tried to find a solution for the water pipes, you know, water, so new ones come in and the cost and all that, and I thought we've done a good job, or the staff has done a good job. But I think that would be a definite blow to the community after the work they've done. And yes, some of it isn't maybe to the perfect point, and we're seeing that, but you're monitoring that, and that's, that's really what we, so thank you for interjecting that, Rory. Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Well, we're down to our council. Does the council have any comments? Are you going to talk about one of the school?
You want to do the school?
Yeah.
You do the school? Me do the school.
Yes, I have comments, thank you.
All right, I'll call it, vice mayor.
Well, Saturday, the mayor and I went to Desert Edge High School, to the Fine Arts Festival, where all five of the high schools in the city of Goodyear gathered with their bands, their dancers, their theater, their artists, the ceramics. It was just one of the, it was just a wonderful show that really reinforced how talented the youngsters are in our city. The mayor had her mayor's award, and she picked a beautiful painting, and the superintendent had his award, and he picked a beautiful bird.
I did, I did the red bird.
You did the bird. I forgot what he got, but it was really nice and very pretty, and I did the council pick, which was my own pick, and I picked a sculpture from Desert Edge, but it was absolutely fabulous. And I was told this was a pilot program, that the fine arts department, parents in the booster club, got together and decided they were going to do this, and Desert Edge was the first school to say that they would host it. And they had activities, they had kids using chalk art on the sidewalk that was absolutely phenomenal, and they had performances in the gym, performances in the cafeteria, performancing in the black box in the middle of the hall, and it was just wonderful. And the kids can hardly wait till next year to do it again, where all the schools come together and feature their fine arts, but it was very well done. Caduceus to all of the adults that organized it and the kids that put it on. It was just wonderful.
Well, it had singing, it had dancing, it had the drum corps, just across the board of creativity, so it was great. Anybody else have any, yes, Councilman Cano?
Well, last week, I attended the Community Resource Night that was a follow-up to the Speak Up Stand Up Save a Life Conference that Goodyear resident Gina Godby here helped co-found and that was held in January at Grand Canyon, number police, I believe the chief was there, and others. There were schools from all over the state, and it was a big event to highlight the challenges that teens face in regards to bullying and drugs and just suicide and a myriad of things. So what they've done this month, in February, was to bring out to the community all the various resources, that they're trying to develop trusted adults for these young people, would maybe somebody from church, your neighbors, your, you know, I'm a grandparent, so I don't, I don't hear what the schools are teaching, because I know our police and teachers and schools are working together, but, so it's interesting to find out all the community resources that are available for our vulnerable youth, and this is something I'd like to explore further, perhaps through our Faith and Community Roundtable, is to... is to put on some type of event to bring that into Goodyear, to bring all these resources. For example, I really know very little about vaping and it's so prevalent. And, and so that's just one example of things that you could learn about. So anyway, that's a
Thank you.
Thought I have.
Councilman Bazillo?
Just, I'm looking forward to Wednesday, again, reading at Mabel Page, Mabel Pageant. So, and I think you'll probably be there too, won't you, Wally?
Oh, no, I read this morning.
Oh, okay.
And today was hat day. And I had my Dr. Seuss hat. I've got my Dr. Seuss shirt on. I brought my bowtie.
Okay.
And it was wonderful. We had such a good time.
Yeah, I'm going to be doing it Wednesday.
Okay.
Councilman Hampton?
I, I read a book today as well. I went to Dr. Seuss' book as well at Odyssey. So that, that was pretty fun. Got to go to two different classes, so it was a good time. And then also went, also to today, what do we call it? Burgers? Burger, not beer, burgers? Is it beer? The ballpark. Business Burgers and Baseball.
And beer.
At the, maybe if I had beer, I'm sure there was some beer there.
That's right, I'm glad you said it and I didn't have to. Works for me.
It's going to be another event, so, yeah. But yeah, so went there, had a lot of good economic development. The team was there, so thank Lori and her team. And
Coffee with a cop?
Then I went to Coffee and a Cop, which was a great, good turnout, even with the Jack Hammer going in the business down the road. And the Saw's going. But a really good turnout, a lot of engagement. And, yeah, a good time as well.
It was close to work, too, it worked for you.
It was like two doors down from my employer, so that was good, my work, so that was nice. Yeah, good time, get out in the community as well, so thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I'm going to turn this over to the city manager.
Thank you, just one brief comment. Unfortunately, we've experienced some technical difficulties with our Facebook live streaming this evening. However, we are streaming on YouTube and our Facebook page is redirecting any of our residents to YouTube to be able to watch the, the meeting. So we'll be debriefing and figuring out what led to that. But it certainly is still available to our residents online.
And Wally has a question for you, so go ahead.
I have an inquiry to staff, please. I would like to request that the city and staff have an expert or a moving person evaluate the condition of the train station so that we can determine if in fact we can even move the structure. If we find that we've waited 10 years too late to move it, then we need to make a decision as council, what we're going to do with that building. And if we, yes, we own it. I was on the committee that helped find it. And we bought it before I was ever on council. And Councilmember Brenda Holland was the chairperson, remember, Mayor?
Sure, I remember.
And that was her, her dream was to bring that train station here and put it in and have a park around it to save the building. But since there's been so much talk about the train station in the last month now, we need to do something about it. If we're going to keep it, then we've got to find a place for it so the foundation can get with it and raise more money. We do have some money, but we're not going to spend it till we know where it's going. But until we determine if it's even feasible to move the building, we can't do anything. And I know the city's going to have to move it eventually, so we might as well find out now what we're up against. If you don't mind, please. That's really important.
So it sounds like the scope of that study would be to see if it can be moved and perhaps how far it can be moved. I think that was part of the consideration is, is distance will, will play a part in that. So I'd be glad to see that.
Yes, thank you. That would be good.
Any other inquiries? Yes, Councilman Loretano?
And if it can't be moved, can we add in that study what we can do with parts of it? Because sometimes you see buildings incorporated, like portions of buildings incorporated to other museums or other buildings to kind of give a panoramic, you know, I, I don't know what condition it is in, but if, any ideas on what we can do with, if it's not movable?